The Prosper Independent School District to order, let the record show that a quorum of, actually, all board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Tonight, Trustee Beavers has offered to lead us in our invocation. Trustee Beavers?
Thank you. Please pray with me. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for everything that you've given us. Father, as we head into another school year now, we just ask that you would continue to keep your hand of blessing on Prosper ISD. Lord, as our students finish out their summer break and as our teachers start to come back, Father, just give them a little more time of rest. And for our administrators that have already returned, we pray that you just give them the sense and mindset to get everything going for a great school year to come. Lord, continue to keep us safe in this next year, Father, specifically. We pray a special prayer of safety and security for our children. With everything going on in the world, Lord, just please look out for the students, the parents, teachers, administrators, everybody here within Prosper ISD. Lord, thank you so much for loving us and the greatest example of love that you've given us through your son, Jesus. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, actually, I'm just gonna pass it to you, Dr. Ferguson. We have some students to recognize.
We have Amanda Hare, who has made a return visit to the Prosper ISD school. We have Gabrielle Klein, who is with us also. So come on up. I want to talk a little bit about both of you. So I want you to tell everyone exactly what you did with UIL Academics. So there's UIL Athletics. These two young ladies went and competed on the academic side of things. And so I want you to talk a little bit about the competition and what all went on. Well, probably not everything, but anyway.
So yeah, we were both on newspapers, so that like made us join journalism at UIL. And then there's like five events, so we competed in like five. And then we had to make it in the top of the district meet, and then the regional meet to compete at state. And then we went this year in like early May, I think, and competed, and then yeah.
So they went to Austin
Yes.
to go compete, because they went to state. So super proud of both of you. We love to see all the academic things that you're doing, because that just makes every student in this district smarter, right? Because you're setting the bar of excellence for them to go after. So we truly appreciate that. But I also wanted to make sure that the board and myself, that we were able to congratulate you on a job very well done. And Ms. Trotter has some awards for you.
Thank you.
Photo op time. Also want to say thank you to the parents. Certainly, our students don't get to where they are without the first teacher, which are the parents. So we truly appreciate you all keeping a high level of excellence and standard in your home academically for both of these young ladies to be able to really excel at that highest level. So thank you all.
Congratulations to our students. And listen, we're not gonna force you to spend the rest of your evening with us. We have some boring things to talk about that adults do at school board meetings, so you're more than welcome to stay. But if you'd like, now is your opportunity to go ahead and leave as well.
Wow, they jumped up.
There you go. Didn't have to do much convincing.
I thought they were gonna write a paper about it. But nope, summertime.
Enjoy the rest of your couple of days of summer, ladies.
Congratulations.
Okay, keeping on with our agenda, we are at Agenda Item Number Five, Public Comment on Agenda Items. There are no individuals who signed up for Public Comment on Agenda Items. So Agenda Item Six, we are at informational reports. And so we're going to hear from Dr. Penn first. Dr. Penn has a couple of...
Go ahead and start off with the monthly financials ending the month of June 30th. So looking through our investments, $124 million in our bond fund. This will increase with July, so we had the recent bond sale settle in July. So next month, this will show the most recent bond sale that we'll use towards the building, continued building of our facilities. General Fund is at $155 million of our overall portfolio. You'll see the interest sinking there, which we'll point out again later, but that's, still has the fund balance for that. And then also what will be the August payments are sitting in there, for a total of $328 million in our portfolio currently. Our general fund, as we begin to wind down the fiscal year, end of June, revenues, as you can see, our revenues are strong compared to our budget. We've done very well on that front for the year with all of our taxes in. One of the later items in there is a budget amendment showing additional revenue. So on that third line down, that's $87 million, you'll see a revenue adjustment amendment for what would represent that number. And then that brings our total current to date, $205 million as of end of June. Payroll cost at 80%, so under where it was last year at this time. And then total expenditures at $173 million, so 78% with only two months of our fiscal year left. So August will also hold anybody that's brought on for the next school year, because accounting-wise, we would pick up all those additional positions and any increases. So August will do, will be a larger amount with the accruals of everybody that works in August, even though it's next school year that actually, and they won't get paid till September, it actually falls on this year's accounting. So we'll work closely to get that ready for, that will be part of the final amendment that we do at the end of next month. Athletic Fund, still looking very similar to what it has been with minimal events, so $770,000 in revenue, $410 in expenses, with a surplus in that fund of $360,000 to date. Food Service, and this shows the amendment we did last month, recognizing $8.1 million in revenue and $8 million expenses with a surplus of $138,000 in the food service program. Pleased with where that is to date. Debt Service, remember, this stayed the same really all year. This will have August payments, so that will take the bulk of that $24 million that's in there. So raised, brought in all the taxes at $64 million and $40 million expended to date with that August payment still outstanding. Construction Projects, Hall Elementary, just about complete as we get ready to open that up this fall. Just kind of, Dr. Bradley and team will be winding down that project. Liliana, this is the first month that this has started, as we're getting Liliana going, showing that contract amount at $32 million with $1.9 being expended to date for that project. And then Walnut Grove, right about the halfway part on its construction contract, with a little over, little under 50% spent on that project. That is the monthly financials. If you've got any questions on those, and if not, we can go into the budget.
Anyone, any questions for Dr. Penn?
Okay.
Okay, let's go to Item 6B then.
This is, I've got this built with some of the same slides we talked about last year. I know we'll have a different audience every month. I won't spend as much time on those early slides since we went through those in-depth last month. I'll focus more at the end as we kind of start talking about the difference between functions. But I think there's a lot of these topics that it's good for us to visit on each time we meet. So just a quick recap on some of those slides we talked about last time, with tax rate, revenue, expenses, kind of impact of fund balance. And then we'll start diving into the things we didn't talk about, which would be the change between function, food service, and debt service. All of this in preparation for the end of next month, when we would adopt a budget and tax rate. And I'll still show you kind of what's left to occur in the next month and a half or so. So just a reminder, common misconception is that as our taxes go up, that the school receives additional funding. Based on our funding formula with the state, it is really tied to the programs and the students we have in attendance. So all that it really is doing is effectively reducing the amount that the state has to provide for us. Looking at our tax rate, we should get our certified values of property, which will help us firm up this number for sure in the next few days. And we get one from Collin County and one from Denton County, since we have property in both counties. And so we'll talk about that in a little bit, the process that goes through that. But the state actually provides us what's called the maximum compressed rate, or the MCR. And then everything we have on top of it basically slides down. So a lot of this is really set for us. We will adopt it, but a lot of it is set through TA based on property values and legislative statute. So but right now, until we get the property certified values, I'm anticipating our tax rate to be at about $1.44, broken down the way you see it there. Some just revenue highlights, built on anticipating growth of about 2,600 students, improved attendance. Hopefully, we'll see less quarantines and COVID cases and things like that. And then just improved event attendance and ticket sales, because if you're thinking back a year ago when this was done, really not sure what the year would look like. And so feeling a lot stronger about those numbers. One thing I just want to point out is, we do receive a lot of funding from what's called the fast growth allotment. It is prorated through the state. So we're actually, through the formula, would be entitled to get an additional $6 million that we don't receive, just because of the allocation of that from the state's budget. So just think, as we talk through a couple of these programs, I want to point things like that out, especially as we prepare for a legislative session in front of us. So additional revenue for next year, primarily, you'll see a larger increase on the tax side and minimal on the state side, because of the property value, most of our anticipated funding from enrollment growth will be paid for by the taxes. I don't anticipate really an additional state increase in that. In fact, we are, depending on where everything lands, we could be paying back into the state through recapture, because we could additionally generate more revenue than is necessary through our tax base. So we'll know more about that in the coming months. The bulk of our expenses as we go into the function is tied to personnel. We talk about that a lot. About 85% of our budget is personnel. We've picked up another 330 staff members or so since last budget cycle. And this is kind of just giving some sample numbers of what our average employee costs. And then a couple of goals we talked about, or that you shared, was just this desire to have lower student-to-teacher ratios, especially at our about five fastest-growing campuses, to allow for that growth to come in, which would ultimately reduce the number of class-sized waivers. And so that was really a strong focus of this budget cycle. Inflation and growth hitting us in all areas, everywhere you can imagine. So listed a few items there that we are having to work with, but it's, the schools are not unaffected by this. The whole world is right now, or the whole country and states. So got those items we mentioned last time. Again, just a breakdown of our budget of 200, anticipated $252 million that I'll bring to at the end of next month, and 211 of that being payroll. This is what I want to show here, and again, this shows up in our revenue amendment in a little bit. The current budget as presented has got a negative, or $7.6 million deficit. I'm anticipating through this revenue that we'll put at least that much into fund balance this year. So we always need to look at budgets in kind of a biennial piece, in the way when we work through the state thing, don't ever look at one just in isolation for a number of reasons. And so I just want to show this is where we're looking at. And this also assumes that we fill every position and spend every dollar, which we historically have not done, as you're seeing in the monthly financials we look at each month. But do want to account for that and treat it as if we would do those things. All right, this is where we kind of begin with the items that were not shown last month. So what this is taking is the 21, this current budget comparing to that same function, which is the big bucket, the way I would describe that, to this year, and then just the difference in the percentage. Again, the bulk of this is additional positions. And so 11 is where the bulk of our resources are. That's people and things that directly impact classroom, primarily your classroom professionals and teachers, and then any of those supplies. So everything through there is just, you'll see a minimal increase in 13, in staff development. We are using some of our federal funds to help offset some of that. That's why you don't see the growth there that you do in some of the other ones, trying to supplant a few costs there. And I'll kind of go through these slowly, but if you've got anything you want to pull out and ask, let me know. I may have to get back to you on it if it's way down there in the weeds. This is the Student Services section, so groups that work with them, counseling, nurses, transportation. Food Service is primarily its own fund. There's a little bit there that we have to pay for out of $199, which is, which you see that group there for. Obviously, fuel on the transportation side. There's a couple. I wanted to pull one thing real quick on Function 52, so that's security. So that would be like our police department, things like that. With everything going on, one thing that I do want to point out, we're starting to see some requirements that come from the state on security. As Dr. Bradley and Chief Essels have mentioned, we are already doing a lot of those things with our police officer per every campus, and we are kind of above and beyond. But I think an interesting piece going into the next legislative session is there's an allotment that's kind of a safety and security allotment from the state. And we're spending at about $3 million this next year. From that allotment, currently, about $225,000 of our budget comes from that allotment. So while we are receiving an allotment of $225,000, we're spending over $3 million on that. One of the things that I would like to see personally as we get into this next session is if, that they would fund that additionally, because that would free up some funds for us to do some other things. We're already investing without that allotment. And so to have a little extra assistance on that to support the programs we're already doing would be very beneficial. I just wanted to point those things out as we go through it. Getting into some of these other ones, the debt service, you'll notice there wasn't one last year. That's primarily an accounting measure, mostly for copiers and leases, used to, copiers and things like that, that were various things that we leased. On campuses, we would put in instruction because they were used by classrooms. But because it's a year-long commitment or more, accounting-wise, we move it down to a debt service as a GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board Rule, GASB rule. So that's not additional funds, it's just moved from where it was in the budget. That additional 81 is to allow us to do some projects without bond money that would generally not be bond money. So we do some projects, maybe along working with those projects, but generally wouldn't come out of bond funds. So it's just establishing some funds there to do that. And then the other governmental, or things like the appraisal districts and taxing office that we pay fees for. So welcome, any questions on any of those? If you've got any, if it's very in-depth, probably have to work my team to figure out the specifics. But that's really the most, most of it is just additional personnel units and nothing we haven't talked about before. Anything on the general fund before I move forward? Food Service, so Food Service is a broken out, a separate fund. So the revenue would be the money from the meals sold and the reimbursements that we receive. Expenses would be to any labor and to our third-party, er, mark. You can see the changes for there, just built on reasonable growth. And also what we've seen, you know, we made an amendment in Food Service last month that brought that up, so we've raised that some, just some kind of what we've seen this year. And then the final one is a very simple one, it's the debt service. So we know what our expenses will be next year on that side based on the bonds that we've sold. The only thing that might move a little bit, that revenue number, once we get our certified tax rolls, that could move a little bit. If anything, I would anticipate it to go up, but we do have some debt service fund balance if it did not. I'm anticipating that to go up. So we'll have that for next month, too. And then just continuing, next steps, just continuing to monitor enrollment numbers and the numbers we have in our programs, staffing, and just really continue to go through, getting our certified values pretty quick. There's a really close timeline you'll see from when we get our certified values in, which drives a couple of numbers. Then I'll fill out a local property value study, it's a TA form. And then very quickly after that, they will issue the preliminary MCR, and then we get into doing some things in the newspaper and publications on our website, so people can attend that hearing. But it is a very tight timeline that we'll get ready for our August board meeting, which is the last week of the month. That allows us to do our kind of final payroll and accrual and any kind of amendments that we need. And just, every day is precious for my team at that time of year. So I'm grateful, I appreciate you making that modification for us, it helps us significantly. And then really, always looking at these years on kind of the one we're in and the next one coming, and the one we're coming out of, '23, '24, with the expiration of some of those federal funds that we've been receiving legislative session. So Comptroller has, just in the past couple of days, put out significant revenue surplus for the state. Now, what they choose to do with that, through revenue, funding for schools or tax compression or however they choose to do that, will yet to be determined. But there's no doubt that they will have some funds to work with, so. And then opening three campuses the next two years in a row. So lots going, but good stuff. Joining questions on any of that? I know we've talked through some of that, and Mr. Linker, Mr. Walburn and I, you know, kind of went through some things with finance, training, meeting, whatever, and have kind of touched on some of those a little more in-depth, but any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Penn? No, this information was included in our packet, so we've had an opportunity to take a look at it. This was information only, so there's no action that's needed to be taken on it tonight. Dr. Penn, thank you for that information.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Agenda Item 6C. We are, do we have any videos tonight for our construction updates?
Yes, we do.
There we go. There it is.
Walnut Grove High School, coming along very nicely. Very impressed with the progress that they're making. And did you notice the song is different?
I know.
Just to change it up a bit. Our early childhood school located in the West Ridge subdivision, so you can see where we are, dirt level at this point, but soon, as we know. And then Elementary School Number 16, which will be Liliana Elementary School in the Liliana subdivision. You can see kind of we're in the same, pretty much, place with the moving of dirt and excavating.
Nice. Great things happening in Prosper ISD, and it's nice to see we're building facilities to do those great things in. All right, Agenda Item 7A, or 7, Agenda Item 7 is the Consent Agenda. And so we have a couple of items to approve in the Consent Agenda. Item A is the minutes from last month's board meeting, special meeting, and then we had a couple of special meetings included in there as well. So there's the one regularly scheduled board meeting, and then three special meetings. Also, in the Consent Agenda is Item 7B, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Sale of Obsolete, Unusable, and Non-Reparable Surplus Property by Public Auction in accordance with Section 11.151(c) of the Texas Education Code. I did want to mention in the meeting minutes from 7:7, there is a list of all board members being there, and there was one that was not present for that. So we just need to make that one change. Other than that, if there is... No one needs to pull anything from consent. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda.
Trustee Smith, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. All in favor? That is all of us. All right, we are at Agenda Item 8. Agenda Item 8A is the Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Purchasing Network Equipment for Elementary 16 and 17 and the Early Childhood School. This information is in our packet. Does, are there any questions regarding Agenda Item 8A? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve purchasing network equipment for Elementary 16 and 17 and the Early Childhood School in the amount of $2,149,483.36, as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Dahl. The second is by Trustee Beavers. Thank you, Trustee Beavers. All in favor? Okay, that is all of us. Agenda Item 8B, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Purchasing Hardware and Software to Upgrade the Audio and Video Capacity at Prosper High School Arena. This information is in your packet. Are there any questions or any discussion regarding this one?
15 years out of it, it's pretty good.
It is, especially for technology. And if you've been in the arena, the board's glitching, and there's just some things that definitely need to be repaired. But 15 years is impressive, and it's just a credit to Mr. Dave Lasco and his team for really trying to make things work and stretch it out to make sure that it lasted that long.
Good job. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion regarding Agenda Item 8B? Okay, I will ask for a motion for this one.
I move that the board approve the purchasing hardware and software to upgrade the audio and video capacity at the Prosper High School Arena in the amount of $1,753,247.36, as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. All in favor? That is all of us. Agenda Item 8C, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Purchasing the Skyward Business Enterprise Resource Planning System. This information is in your packet. Are there any questions regarding Agenda Item 8C?
I have a question.
Sure.
So we already use Skyward, but I know this is a little bit different than what we use. Can we just briefly explain that?
Yeah, so the Skyward that we're using currently is the Student Information System. They have another package, which is the business side of things. And the current system that we have is a sender, and it's really a software that's made for a small school district, which worked great for us for a certain span of time. But now that we've made that leap really into being this large district literally overnight, what we're finding is that with our business personnel, HR personnel, there's a lot of manual entry, and we're, as far as looking at the efficiency on the work side of it, it's not doing what it needs to for us. And so we needed to look at a system that was more robust, that could actually help and assist with that efficiency of work. And hats off to all of our folks that have been using this system, because it's a lot of extra hours, and they gladly do it. But I know it's a lot of like...
But I know it's a lot of like typing in a spreadsheet to make it work, to make sure people get paid and that their information is correct.
Thank you.
And will this handle us through all of our growth?
Well, I don't know that I'm going to go out that far because that's about fifty thousand kids when we're at build-out. But certainly what we've seen with Skyward on the student information side of it, they provide excellent service. It's been a great tool for us to be able to data mine student information. And we, we have a team that's actually put together that includes Mr. Dave Velasco, our H R team, as well as our business office team. Because those three components really making sure that this is going to do what it needs to for all areas because they're all tied to it. And also knowing that we already have Skyward working, that whole transition into this system will be somewhat smooth because of the commonality.
Have we talked to other districts about how they like the system?
Yes, and several of the districts, larger districts or districts our size use Skyward.
Great questions. Any other questions regarding agenda item eight C? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll move that the board approve purchasing the Skyward Business Enterprise Resource Planning System in the amount of one million, seven hundred, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and two dollars as presented by admin.
That num, what was the number again, I'm sorry?
One million, seven hundred, thirty, one million, seven hundred, thirty thousand, six hundred and two.
That's what I have, okay. Thank you trustee Linker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you so much trustee Dahl, all in favor? That's all of us. Agenda item eight D, consideration and possible action on approval of budget amendment. This information is in your packet. Are there any questions regarding this agenda item? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Move that the board approve the food service, hold on, the food service budget amendment as presented by administration.
Thank you trustee Beavers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Cavender, all in favor? That is all of us. Agenda item eight E is the consideration and possible action on approval of fund balance assignment. This information is in your packet as well. Are there any questions regarding this agenda item? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the fund balance assignment as presented by administration.
Thank you so much trustee Smith, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Dixon, all in favor? That is all of us. Agenda item eight F, consideration and possible action regarding a resolution allowing for the potential additional payments to employees during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. This resolution, this information is in your packet. Are there any questions regarding this resolution?
No question, I, I just, I think it's a great thing that we're doing, Dr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Linker.
If there are no questions, I will ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the resolution as presented by administration.
Thank you so much trustee Dahl, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Cavender, all in favor?
Teamwork.
And we are going through them tonight, this, thank you, that's all of us. Trustees on agenda items eight G and agenda item eight H, I would ask that we would move those on the agenda. I believe there's conversation for those with that one being personnel and property related on those two agenda items. I would like to discuss those in closed session, if there are no objections to that. Thank you for that. All right, that moves us to agenda item nine. Agenda item nine is public comment on non-agenda items. Tonight we have three individuals who have signed up. And so with that, let me take just a minute to just share some brief comments from the board and then we'll hear from these three individuals. All public comments at regularly scheduled meetings should be limited to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies F N G, D G B A, or G F Local. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy D E D Local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. When necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the allotted time for each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to speak. Tonight, again, we have three individuals who signed up and so each individual will be given three minutes to speak. There were no comments regarding agenda items, so we will hear from three individuals who will speak on non-agenda related topics. With that, I'm going to call our first speaker up, Mr. James Pope. Are you here, Mr. Pope? There you go. You had your directions telling you how to get here. I like it. Your directions going to tell you how to get to the podium?
We're having tacos tonight.
I got you. Oh, your directions weren't telling you how to get here?
I apologize for that, my phone was telling me who was the boss.
Understood. Mr. Pope, you have three minutes to address the school.
Thank you. As we all are aware, security is very important for our students. And, and I like the direction the district has taken specifically with the training that is being occurred, that's, I think that's wonderful. But what can we do as parents? What can we do as guardians? What can we do as citizens to help secure our children and make them feel safe in school? And as I said before the last meeting, one of the big things is the watchdog program. Getting involved, being able to walk along the hallways to pay attention to what's going on, report things that are occurring. You know, we, we have bathrooms that are closed that we need to try to reopen and hopefully that's going to happen this year. But we need to help make that happen. And if it does happen, we're the ones that need to be involved to help keep that way. The other thing is how, what is another option for the district? And I've had some discussions with some people and one of the ideas that came up was we have bus drivers that have already been cleared in background that are working part-time that may want to pick up a couple of hours and walk the floor during those times. It's an option that might, you might consider looking at. Lastly is special needs. I have two special needs boys and they're not going to react the same as your typical students when it comes to a certain situation. And one of the things that I'd like to see happen is that more parents that have special needs children reach out to the district and let them know what they know about children with special needs, how they react. Because routine is the most important thing, because if you're out of a routine, they're going to react different, differently than other children and they're actually going to cause more of an issue and a safety issue than help the situation. So I hope you consider doing that. And again, I'm going to be involved in watchdog myself and I'm, I'm looking forward to the first meeting in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Our next speaker is Mr. Jim Herblin. Mr. Herblin, are you still here?
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Herblin, you have three minutes to address the school board.
Good evening. I was at a meeting the other night and they were talking about the books, you know, the immoral books that have been in the, that have been in the district and are still here. And this gentleman started making reference to he, there's thirty-six books out or whatever. And, and he doesn't really know if the books are out of the district. I don't know if the books are out of the district, I haven't seen anything that evidences that the books have been removed from the district as the district has said. And so what I wanted to visit with you guys about tonight is to, to have some motion or put something in front of yourselves that makes you accountable on the fact that you know the books have been removed. Not you think they've been removed, you know. And you know where they are. And if they're under lock and key in a closet, you know where the closet is. And I, I know that's asking a bit much, but it's, it's the only way to do it. You, you guys have got to lead in this area and I feel like this thing has been slow-played for, I've been coming, talking to you guys for six, seven months now and we're still at the same place. I, I know it's been promoted in advance that, that things have happened, but there's no evidence that anything has happened. So I don't know if you, my recommendation would be an audit and you've got somebody that's accountable, not just for the books and the, that are going to be in the closet, but also these digital, access to digital books. And it needs to happen. People are concerned about it. When I hear leaders in our community stand up and say they know that all these books have been removed and I know they haven't been, that's a problem. So I just want to encourage you to do that and I know leadership is tough. And I'm just going to give you a little analogy before I sit down, but if, if Jesus were to run for office today or back even in his day, two thousand years ago, he would have never won. And we all know that. And he wouldn't have won because he was a leader. Leaders lead, they don't compromise. Okay, they're bold, they're principled. And you guys, I know you've got it in you and I just want to encourage you to use it. And let's do things right here, let's get rid of these dirty books and get rid of all the other dirty stuff, whether it's in the library or in the classroom. I just want to encourage you to step up, I'd love to see somebody make a motion tonight and just get this thing moving along so we can have some accountability. Thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Herblin. Our third and final speaker for tonight is Mr. Andy Bogden. Mr. Bogden, are you, there you are. There we go. Mr. Bogden, you have three minutes to address the school board.
Well, I don't know everybody up here, but I know most of you. And I want to start off by saying my wife Lori and I moved to Prosper in twenty-twenty. We've got five grandchildren now going into, they're four of men and one going in next year to the P I S D school district, so that's pretty exciting. I also am a member of the Prosper Citizens Group and a lot of what I'll say, which is brief, represents our board and also many of our members or all of our members for that matter. Start off by saying congratulations Drew on your appointment to the president of the board and also to the new members, the new trustees, congratulations to you. Ironically, some of my comments follow a little bit of what's already been said. But regarding the books, first of all, thank you all for making progress in this. Thirty-six is progress and I, like Jim, would like to see some better communication on how this is occurring, when it's occurring. And just total communication doesn't seem to always be there unless we ask and ask and ask. So I don't know if there's a way, I'm sure there is, to standardize a reporting mechanism back to the public when these requests are made so that we don't have to ask. It doesn't seem like we really should have to. And I think that would resolve a lot of issues, communication is always the root of all evils. But I think that's important, so thanks again for the efforts on that. I do request a thought towards changing the way that the reconsideration committee works. And the only thing there, because I think it's a great setup all in all, is that only one parent is invited to attend a reconsideration for a specific book. But the individual, parent or concerned citizen, that actually presented the reconsideration form in the first place is not usually there. And it seems to me that they should be there, so even if a parent plus that person so that the, the committee can hear specifically from that individual in addition to the rest of the process. So I'd like y'all to think about that and see if we could implement something of that matter. The last thing I want to talk about is federal funding when it comes into school districts. I don't believe that federal government always has the interests of local citizens in mind. I don't think that, that they, the requirements and stipulations that sometimes come along with federal funding is contradictory to what Prosper, for instance, might have in mind for our students. And what I would request, since we are certainly not a poor school district, we have funds, our revenues from increased property values are going up and will continue for quite some time. Just the request that if federal funds come with stipulations that don't meet our needs, to consider that. But thank you all so much.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you again for all your hard work.
We appreciate it. All right, we are at agenda item ten. We will now go into closed session accordance, in accordance with Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, dot zero-seven-two, dot zero-seven-four, dot zero-seven-six, dot zero-eight-two, zero-eight-two-one, and zero-eight-seven. When we are finished with our closed session discussions, we'll return to open session to take any actions that need to be taken. The time is now seven forty-five P M and we're going into closed session. Okay, the time is ten o'clock P M and we are back from closed session. And we have a couple of items to address. Let's go back to agenda item eight D and I'd ask for a motion.
Yeah, I move that the board approve the budget amendment as presented by administration.
Thank you trustee Beavers, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you trustee Linker, all in favor? That's all of us. Okay, let's go now to agenda item eleven A.
I move that the board approve the hiring of all contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you trustee Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Smith, all in favor? Okay, that is all of us. And then the last one tonight is agenda item eleven B.
The board has confirmed that the administration has already agreed to grant the parents requested remedies and the board has further confirmed that all applicable records accurately reflect the actions of all parties involved. As such, I move that the board uphold the administration's level-two decision.
Thank you trustee Dahl, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you trustee Beavers.
I need to abstain, I was not present at the meeting.
Thank you trustee Smith, all in favor? That is five of us, all right. All against. That is one of us. Okay, that takes care of all of our action items for tonight. It is ten oh-two P M and if there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.